I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 10th.
Second.
All in favor?
Is that all here for this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that's the windmill for using it.
Gotcha. Make a motion to approve the bills for November 25th to be paid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Water update.
In here.
Eve.
So Smithville contract.
Yeah.
Talked to Travis today. The contract that they've got. Did you put that in her packet?
I think it's still in there.
Okay, well, the contract they got is, it's like thirty-two dollars a month for the phone, and it's like ninety-nine dollars a month for the internet. And according to Travis, we can do the alarm system on either one of them. So.
So you want it or the other?
That's all we actually have to have.
Yeah.
For the two of them, it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars a month. So, do you need internet down at the water plant?
I don't think so.
It's not like it's gonna work on the phone.
Yeah, it's also should work on a sensor, as long as they're stealthy on the internet.
Do we need internet for the cameras?
Yeah, so if they're.
Probably not.
I've done quite a few camera systems, you probably, for almost nine percent of the time, you need, unless you just have something that's recording you down there.
Yeah, if it's.
And then you come and check out whatever you wanna look at, but you're not gonna look at it from afar.
Right.
Well, if we do the internet, then we don't need a phone.
I would do the internet without phone.
Oh, okay. And it's ninety-nine dollars a month.
So if we have the internet, then we can make cameras, and we can also have Wi-Fi calling available to phones that don't have the service down there.
So you just want both the internet?
Yeah. Make a motion to go with the Smithville internet down at the water plant.
Second.
All in favor? We did an extension letter for the water project. Do I need to read that?
Is it just an extension?
Yeah. Oh, Donnie, I think you've got that. I gave it back to you, I signed it. So we need to vote on that. Right? Make a motion that we approve the extension letter to the water project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because it only got extended to, it wasn't very long, was it?
No, it wasn't.
Sometime in January, I think. Because they can't make it right now.
Mary, are you on board?
Yeah.
What do you think about the way you did it right now?
Down the water plant?
Can you guys talk to them and see if they just live this way, just like it is now?
Does it still have the break spots in here, or did they take that?
It has break spots in the middle.
Where the tanks were sitting?
Tank settings.
But they're gone, it's just now.
Yeah, it's slabs.
Slabs.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Be better just to do it stuck there.
Okay. Who would we need to talk to about that? Corey?
Corey.
Alright, that would be done.
And we've had a problem with the credit card machine. So, we are asking for permission to extend the water to the Midwestern Ford. Do you have a problem with that?
I do not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I second it.
Yeah, there you go. Sewer, he's not here. Where is he? Street? Street?
Oh, sewer.
Yes.
The alarm system, the hookup to Maxim. If you'll remember the progress meeting, they said it could work the way it is, but it's obsolete, and that if they have to find parts for it, they'll have to go on eBay, and they might be hard to find. So, talking to them today, if we do the upgrade, change everything out, it's gonna be right at fourteen thousand dollars plus. Because I noticed a couple of things in their contract that it did not cover, like antenna mounts if they need outside mounting and stuff. So, my recommendation would be to fix what, switch what you got right now and use it, and then maybe in twelve months, if you're having problems with it, change that.
Then change it out, yeah.
And there's a couple of reasons for that recommendation that.
We got fifteen thousand. Okay.
So I guess you probably need a motion to leave it as is, I mean, switch it over as is, and then deal with.
We're talking about just keeping it the way it is right now.
Yeah.
The landline, right? Is how it works.
Yeah, but I think it'd be internet because.
Would you need internet down there? There is no internet service down there.
Down at the sewer plant?
I think it's a landline, it's the actual.
It's through Verizon.
But I didn't get Verizon doing it, I think it's the sewer again.
They did, but that's what the.
What they're wanting to do.
And it's gonna be like twenty-some dollars more a month, I think, for another motive or wherever they gotta put down there.
But if we keep it the way it is now?
It still won't be extra because they gotta put it into the system.
Gotcha.
Okay, so what do you believe the motion is then?
To either leave it as is, or somebody needs to make a motion to update it, put a new system in, and spend the fourteen thousand plus.
But we're going to do that further on down the road, a year from now?
If they have problems or whatever.
If we have problems with it.
Right now it works.
I don't know that that takes a motion to leave it as it is.
Well, I need to give them some direction tomorrow on what they, how they want it received.
That's correct.
We're in agreement to leave it alone, the way it.
Make a motion to leave it alone.
To switch over what we have.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization for Midwestern Engineers to grade the streets and file needed forms for next year's community crossings grant.
That was part of our extension? No, extension was on the law. This is what we agreed to, so they can, by the December first deadline.
Yes, by December first. I say we do it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire?
Yeah.
We, we're gonna do some trade with the county, with the Millings, with some fans and sort, so. And I've got the two alleys done, I've talked about getting those with the Millings. If there are any more you guys can think of, let me know before next week.
That alley by Norma's house? It washes out.
Well, I looked at, if we put anything in there, it's gonna raise that up, and put it over into the house.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We, we'll all look at it in more, and make sure.
Right.
So maybe we can put something in that mow spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Mount up in.
Because I know Steve's property gets flooded there.
Right. I'll look at that more. Also, from now on, I won't be helping guys anything to do, they got too many bosses, so I'll let Donnie and Juan to take care of that from now on, so.
Okey-dokey. Fire?
Um, I promised the building thing last meeting, I looked into it a little more. The more I look into it, the more it's gonna hurt us. Basically, what we gotta do is which cherry where, we're gonna make the ordinance, and put the new pricing in the ordinance. We have to send letters to everybody in the townships and the town, and they have the option to opt in or opt out. If they opt out, we cannot build them. And the medical run part of it, we can't build because the state's, the two governments in these can't build, so if Chris is building, we can't know on the medical.
Okay.
So, it's, in my opinion, it's just another way that the state can push everybody to full-time part of.
Okay. And those two applications?
They will be voted on, the first one is the next one?
Okay. Alrighty. I've already got one letter. I kindly request that the council inform Gosport Volunteer Fire Department no longer make medical runs to my residence, seventy-nine eighty-two Smith Road, Gosport, Indiana, due to the new scheduled charging fees to the homeowner when they make a medical run. Juan, apply. Right? Tell them. No more runs.
Just say your word, Juan, we won't feel the charge for that.
I guess we really don't have a system in place for the buildings. Right now, I know at some point in time, many years ago, we did an ordinance setting that up, but it hasn't been used. I mean, is that something that we're going to try to put into effect now?
We put it into effect a long time ago, we've been building for several years.
Who have you been building?
Insurance companies.
But not for medical runs, right?
Right, we can't build medical, never been able to build medical runs. We always build, all structure fires are built in insurance. Insurance phases, in, nine times out of ten, they pay five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And who do they pay that to?
Donnie can draw some checks.
Pardon me? Don gets the checks? So I go into which fund?
The Gosport Volunteer Fire Department. The checks are made up to the fire department, not to my own.
Okay.
I do have something to say. I really would prefer the Gosport Fire Department not come to my home. And until we check more into it, I don't feel like there is, not unless there's one on file, a policy for confidentiality. Because when you guys come out to my home, it's already back all around town what just happened in my house. I don't know who's saying it, neither do I care. I want it stopped. The only way I can see it to stop is if you guys have a policy in place for confidentiality. Do you have to adhere to abide by HIPAA law?
Yes, we do.
Well, then somebody needs to, you need to inform your volunteer partner.
Here's the problem with that. That's on scanner land, so anybody that's got a scanner can hear it and knows we're there. So that ain't just.
Yeah, but these are details, that's going to be detailed. Is everything being detailed? Everything that's happening in my home?
Not on the work, no.
That's what I've been hearing from other people. I, I want, I don't want people to know all around town, my business. And if that, if that keeps people that work in Gosport, or the town of Gosport, away from my property, then that's what's gonna have to happen. My family business is my family business and my medical business. Yes, I understand you're certified, and I get that, but I don't want it all around town.
I agree.
And isn't there something that you guys should hand out when you come to a medical run, just like the EMS, about privacy news?
That it's all governed with EMS, S of Arc, because we work under EMS.
You are under the Spencer EMS?
Yes. The Arc Manager of Riders, the same manager of Riders EMS.
Because I realize that since only four houses count, I mean, you're gonna be the first one to respond.
Right.
And I get that. But I want some sort of confidentiality stuff going on, because you come into work every day, I don't need to hear all that. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
So something, whether you bring it up to a meeting and you let your volunteers know? And that's, everybody should do that way.
I agree.
Okay?
So do you want them or not?
If you can show me a policy about confidentiality and it stays that way, then I wouldn't mind you coming out to my home. But what comes, those aren't my home, needs to stay at my home.
Exactly.
So, me hearing it from other people's not gonna work. You see what I mean? This just makes my day stressful, or I don't need that.
I understand.
Okay? So if you can come up with a confidentiality policy that's in place, and it's updated, with the HIPAA law, or whatever you guys have to abide by, okay?
Joe Miller?
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank the board and the city for taking the house down, and it looks beautiful. The work we've done is fantastic. Very pleased. Thank you very much. Great job, and greatly appreciated the work. And also, if the city is interested in selling the property, I might be interested in it, so. Just kinda put that out there. But thank you, thank you very much.
I think we'll have to make a determination, and ask exactly how much money between, between the labors. I segregated the attorney fees that it took, and those are all part and parcel. We can come up with a price, and then we can either open bids on it, we can sell it at auction, you can do whatever you want to, and then make a determination as to what happens, do any funds over and above our actual cost of cleanup. This is our first go-around, we'll have to make this determination.
Just keep me informed when that happens.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it, glad we finally got it taken care of.
I am too.
Thanks, Joe.
Appreciate y'all.
Michael Trussler? You're looking to annex into town and hooking onto the sewer?
Yep. So, how that works?
What we're, in terms of an annexation, a voluntary annexation, you'll have to make application through the town. I think we have a form that you can use. Tell us exactly all the contact information, exactly where the property's located, and things like that. We'll have to have a legal description of the property, and then we prepare an annex petition for you to file with the town. If the town then is favorably disposed, we will have to publish notice in the Evening World, or such other publications that exist, to take legal notices, and then we would do a final annexation order. The last time we did this, it was a voluntary annexation, the person doing, requesting the annexation paid the legal fees to do that. I gave them a price, they had greatly reduced amount to get it all taken care of, and I would extend the same courtesy to you, and I have your information here, and I'll send you all the information at your email, and then you can determine it, determine what you wanna do.
Okay.
Okay?
Second.
Happy to.
If you're gonna want to house next door to me that already has sewage, I'll wait to hook it up to you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Well, if I call the house next to me, start to put that annex in.
Uh-huh.
If I annex in, can I hook it up to that sewer, since it's already there?
I'm not the expert on hookups. I don't, you can certainly hook up, whether or not you have to pay a fee to hook up, I don't know that. And we should be able to do that, shouldn't we not?
Singleters and ordinance, that we can't share water, we can't share sewer. We talked about tiny homes. We specified each residence would have its own water meter, its own sewer.
Right, is this, is this a, that tiny home situation?
No.
It's a full-blown house.
It's a house that has a sewer.
I quite honestly, I suspect that if it has a different billing address and a different setup, that you'll have to have it separately metered and separately charged to be able to do it. Is that your understanding, Don?
Well, my understanding is that he's gonna tear down the one house, and make, possibly build a barn there, or a storage, really. So, I don't know why he wouldn't tie that address in with his.
That's right. I guess the question, do we still have one service connection, is that what we have?
Yeah, we have one at the old house that he just purchased. But there was none at the house that he lives in. So, he wants to annex it, and that way they'll both be in the town limits.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any particular aversion to doing it as one bill if we're able to do that, because we're not, we're not putting any additional strain on the sewer system by doing this, by allowing that, so I would be in favor of allowing one hookup, one billing, if that's what we're talking about. Now, if we end up with two separate and distinct residences on the property, then I would have to rethink that.
Now, it's my understanding, annex on one, make it one plot.
Well, I understand that, but it's one plot with a house and an outbuilding?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just saying, if you have two houses as opposed to a house and a small outbuilding, I would rethink it at that particular juncture, but I would not be inclined to do that right now. And again, it's not my decision, it's their decision, so.
He's the legal guy.
Okay. We'll, we'll address the annexation, and then we'll address the hookup.
Craig?
Aye. Yes.
You're up.
I wasn't agendaized, but I.
Yeah, you are the agenda.
Somebody put me on there.
I did.
Alright, well, I'm, uh, I want to submit to you. Notice of substantial completion. So the contract date is December first. We are substantially complete with the public restrooms. Still have finished floor going down tomorrow, and put the rubber base in, there's a little flashing to do outside, but that's it. Other than that, is the question about the water. The supply of water is insufficient to flush four stools, even to flush one right now, will not flush. It will take three flushes in order to flush liquid, let alone solid. So, the, from the very beginning, it required more than a three-quarter inch line. Plumbers have done what they can do at this point, and at one point suggested putting in a pressure booster. It's not a pressure problem. They finally, after doing all their calculations of situation, determined that it is not a pressure problem, it is, because they measure, they measure at the main, coming into the building, seventy-nine pounds of pressure, which is more than ample to, I mean, you probably get sixty at your tap at home, but that's producing sixty, seventy-nine pounds, which is more than enough, and it's a volume problem, it's not a pressure problem. So, it needs to be, what the plumbers are recommending is to meet the inch and a quarter line that is there, you could supply an inch and a half would be even better, but three-quarter inch line is not gonna. And then on further investigation of all of that, last year, well, years prior, Lazy Days was hooking the hose to that water, that water supply line, and supplying all the vendors up the street. This facility is primarily for the purpose of park and Lazy Days festivals and all of that, which, with that additional load on that small line, you wouldn't have restrooms at all. The lavatories work fine, it's the flushing, the flush valves. One alternative could be replacing the stools with pressure assist stools, but now you're back into tank type with lids and all that, which you don't want in a public restroom. Those kids are gonna break the lids, they're gonna mess with the tanks and all that. That's why we went with the flush valves that we had. So, so that's a major issue. It's beyond my control. Delivering what I promised. Does that, I'll put mine on silent. So, in your substantial completion packet, I included the contract, which.
Hey Dad.
Sort of gone through and checked off all of my responsibilities there. The bond, performance bond, Wally Ford's office contacted me today to ask about, is the project complete? So, they're on top of that, and I told him that I would give him a copy of the substantial completion notice that issuing you. Inside there too are a reduced set of the construction plans, so you have the plans of all that, it's been done. The state design release is included, those points on there, which we have checked from the state that they want particular, so those have all been checked off, and I've given notice to the inspecting officer there, which is the state fire marshal, and he has not given the final inspection yet, he's on vacation until November thirtieth, and so hopefully he gets back. And so hopefully when he gets back, we can make that final inspection and, uh, and write, sign off on the project. Also in there is a progress report. There's a news release. And then I've given you all of the vendors and subcontractors' contact information that have been used on the project and all of the subcontractors' certificates of insurance. So some that have, um, some that, all that had workman's comp is on that certificate of insurance. There were a couple that were basically sole proprietors or what have you that only have waivers on themselves. So also there is reimbursable expenses in the contract was mentioned. Possible, possibility of reimbursable expenses. I've given that detailed information there of all the expenses that I have incurred out of that pocket. Because foundation has paid for most of the material and most of the contractors. However, there's always incidentals that you need and they do not reimburse. So then there is also the project expense record. This is basically where, year to date, where we are is about $82,000 and there's still outstanding invoices yet to collect and pay. So those are, those will be covered by the funds from the community foundation. So.
I thought there was an inch and a quarter line put in down there, wasn't there? Did we discuss that? No?
I guess my question is, we have certificate of substantial completion. We're not going to be able to use it, is that what you're telling me?
It is, it is usable. There's water, uh, in the facility. It's a matter of having more water that's needed for the sized lines that is supplied there.
So what's it going to take to, I, I understand the concept of what it takes to get additional larger sized pipe. I guess what's that logistically going to take to install and get everything up to speed? What's the proposed cost of that?
Well, we've, we've all been talking about that last week with the plumber.
Okay.
And a couple of things that we, I'm not sure whether or not there is an existing six inch line right out in front of the facility in South Street. I've been told that, I don't know that. But we had the opportunity a month ago when Biden and Fanyo, I guess, or one of the contractors, dug up Third Street and put in a new line out there. And I was saying then, we should need more water. So that didn't happen.
Are we sure that the fixtures inside are not defective? Just doesn't.
No.
Make a lot of sense.
They flush, they flush. It's, I mean, just like any, any flush valve operates. It's just not enough water. It just does not. If you can imagine inch and a quarter line, you're bringing a three-quarter inch line to it. That doesn't make sense.
So you pressure it on the volume.
Pardon me?
So then you get pressure but not volume.
He's got seven pounds of pressure on each of the.
He's got pressure. It's not pressure, it's volume volume. So somehow need to supply more water.
That's reason I let you guys know about it. You guys want us to go down and put an inch and a half line in? We'll go down and put an inch and a half line in.
So an inch and a half line. It would also work that.
Yeah, it would run that hydrant there then. But I would still suggest that if you supply water to the vendors somewhere, you, you establish another hydrant somewhere off of another line, not that same one.
We'd have to order all the public stuff to do it. You need meters, another new meter, why not add a server meter?
Does, yeah.
Server there.
Wouldn't need a, would need a larger meter because that's restricting. That meter now is probably down to five eighths by the time, even though you, you.
But you guys, you guys do what you guys want to do. I'll go down and dig it, put in what inch and a half in.
How long does it take to do something like that, once you get the parts in?
I don't even have to move it.
We're going to call 811.
We have to?
Yeah.
I'm aware of this. I probably.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no doubt. No, then there is a gas line with it marked, but we dug all around it. But no, plumbers called Ferguson's, Ferguson Supplies Meters. What we've been buying is neighborhood of 150 bucks or something like that versus a meter big enough to do this would be less than $500. So.
And you got to figure your server and we're done. You got to figure your server with the meter, the cost of bid, and you're going to have to add a new line. Inch and a half plant, deploy it, all of the six inch line, line.
So are sure six inch line down there accessible?
What choice is?
Okay.
He goes up down to zero.
That may be there, and then the question is whether it's live or not.
Yeah, that's it. Did they put another line in the middle of the street or on the other side of the street and abandoned that one before we paved South Street? Because I thought we paved it since we weren't going to have to dig it up and add a new line. But maybe that is, did you line, uh, when everyone got put in?
I wasn't, I don't remember.
What we believe is it's just to the edge of the pavement on the south side. Or it's on the other side of the pavement.
Right, that's, that's good. A lot of money.
If they get, they get it marked, get 811, call and get it marked. We'll go down there and dig it up and see if we can find it. The meters are being painted. Maybe we'll know what we're going from there. If you guys want to do that, it's up to you guys. I thought they put a brand tool that's in.
No, we didn't do all the, they didn't want to use the tank type simply because of the vandalism that's notable in the park to begin with. Everything we did there, why it's concrete block and not stud and drive is because of public use and high degree of potential of vandalism. So that's.
Motion to, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we call any one line.
They can find out what we got.
If the line's there, then we should go ahead and hook in there.
Inch and a quarter.
If, if it's a good line there, yeah. It's an inch and a half line that runs into the fixtures inside of the.
Inch and a quarter.
They're supplying the hydrant as well as the restroom, so I.
Well, we're there, right?
An inch and a half.
Yeah, we'll cut that off right there. We'll scat that off and go into the line he got, that inside, your inch and a quarter.
Okay.
So you want us to put an inch and a quarter in or do you want an inch and a half?
The, to the meter.
To the meter, to the bathroom.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, from the street to the meter, inch and a half.
Inch and a half. And from the meter.
From the meter in, inch and a quarter. Or you can come out of there with an inch and a half and, and go to the inch and a quarter. Just make the reducer, because we're not going to change the line right into the house or into the.
Okay.
We need to get some parts, but we need to find out if that line's legit.
Need to do that first. Do we make a motion?
Yeah.
On second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So your motion for an inch and a half. We'll make sure that the line is valid and.
So. I'm sure that the foundation will want to schedule a ribbon cutting for your presence. And we have opportunity with the, uh, holiday festival. We may be doing that at that time. And mainly a lot of that is for satisfying a lot of the grant requirements. I've already had to do this for some.
Maybe around the basketball court.
Yeah, well, the, uh, the one grant that we got to do this and then others from the foundation. Probably want to have that documented. I, in that report, you'll see in there, I put together for the grant, for the foundation grants, progress report for IH CDA. So.
With regards to your incidental amounts, do we need to go ahead and we don't have to do it tonight? We'll review it and then come back and, and I assume that that's money that would be approved by the town as opposed to the project, is that correct?
Yes.
For your incidentals?
So. By the contract.
Oh, the grant will cover that, so.
Grants, grants will cover that.
So you presented that to us, give us the opportunity to review that and then.
Yeah, well, it's in the, in the folder. And it's not included, my way, but it's only everything I have my seats for.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay, um, John Craig, we need to approve the grant.
Is he the best engineer?
Is he the best engineer? Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, we did that already.
Yeah, I guess it's called, that's who he is, the Northwestern.
Make a motion for adjournment?
So do I need to get hold of milestone and find out when they're coming back?
Oh, yeah. Need to get milestone, come back, put the side, street signs and side signs back up.
They didn't come back?
Yeah. And that one bad spot over by the way of Teddy, looks like a pond. Park before it gets to the drain. If you have anything else, I've seen, for your kids, I haven't seen something I haven't seen.
Yeah, call us soon, somebody.
So, you know, they, I don't know why they didn't put the signs up after they got sidewalk back there.
Yeah.
Go to slide down there. I feel like they took them down.
They should put them up, exactly.
Yes. I'm asking for a burnt house on Jefferson Street.
It's a SCAP house. And we have no control over that yet, right?
Over what?
The house that burned on Jefferson Street.
It's still under, under insurance investigation.
Is it still under investigation?
By the insurance, maybe it's not by the State Farm, I don't know.
Okay.
I know the insurance investigators are there, but I don't know where they, what they determined.
And who, that's not the town's responsibility, is it?
What's that?
That house.
That would be, you know, call their staff. Whatever their insurance tells them they can do is, and they may not have released it yet, I don't know. It'd be something pretty cool, SCAP, and see what their intentions are or where they're at.
Okay.
I need to call them anyway because there's a past due water bill there.
Okay.
And he's gone, I don't know how I can help him, but I need to call them anyway because I'm going to be sending them the bill.
Yeah.
So I can ask them then where it stands, if they'll tell me.
Yeah.
Let me do that.
Yeah.
Because that's why I'm calling before the bills go out.
Okay.
If, if it's not substantial progress made, then in the next 90 days, then it will become our concern to address, so. So we'll see how it goes.
We'll work on it.
I did have the water turned off.
Okay.
So the water is off, it's off in the system, so not anything else is occurring, but there's going to be a balance there.
Make a motion to adjourn? Call in favor?